Okay, good morning or good afternoon. Welcome everyone to this meeting of Oakham's Board of Education. Trustee Doxy, do you mind calling the role, please?
Yes, sir. Tom Buffett is absent. Jason Burns, Katie Kavanaugh, Andrew Phelps,
Here.
Lenny Schruth,
Here.
Gillian Nguyen.
Here.
And I am here.
Wonderful. We're we're going to start off with going into executive session. After that, I'll read the welcome when the we're live on thing. Does anyone want to have or want to give me a motion, please?
Support.
Great. I believe this requires a roll call vote.
Jason Burns, Katie Kavanaugh, Andrew Phelps,
Yes.
Lenny Schruth, Gillian Nguyen.
Here.
And and I am yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We just got back out from executive session. Trustee Doxy, do you mind recalling the role, please?
Yes, Tom Buffett is absent. Jason Burns, Katie Kavanaugh, Andrew Phelps,
Here.
Lenny Schruth, Gillian Nguyen.
Here.
And I am here.
Wonderful. Welcome, everyone, to this special meeting of Oakham's Board of Education held in public for the purposes of conducting business of the school board. Tonight, there's two opportunities for public comment. Citizens who wish to address agenda or non agenda items will have the opportunity at the beginning of the meeting as well near the as well as near the end of the meeting. In person individuals who wish to address the board must complete a blue form located back near the entrance and present to the board secretary prior to the start of the agenda item. Virtual participants will submit their name and address and a message through the chat box located in Zoom's meeting controls prior to the start of the agenda. At the appropriate point of the agenda, the board president will call upon individuals who have submitted a blue card or chat message, and that individual's microphone will be unmuted for their comments. We will start with new hires recognition superintendent hood.
Good evening, trustees and members of the Oakham community. I'm going to turn it over to our interim HR director, Peter Trezis. It's been a busy hiring summer season, and Peter's going to give a brief introduction of our teacher new hires and administrative hires to kind of introduce them to the board and our community. So Pete.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here to introduce nine new teachers and OEA staff that we've hired and one administrator. First teacher that I'd like to introduce you to is Danielle Osborne. You're here.
Come on up, Danielle. Come on up so we can just see you. Yep.
Danielle has a number of years of experience at Huron High School, Wagner Middle School. She's been hired as a counselor at Hiawatha and Cornell. She will be splitting her time there. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
Next is Lindsay Pedlow. There she is. Come on up here so people can see you on camera. Lindsay comes here from Waverly Community Schools, and she was a what Cape four ESL teacher. And she's been hired to be our ELA teacher at
ELL, MLL.
MLL, ELL, MLL, changing the the names every year. I think your search probably says ELA.
Yeah, yeah, and ESL.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Okay. She's going to split her time between Hiawatha and
OPM.
OPM, the Montessori program. Welcome. We have Jennifer Muffet, our most recent hire as of yesterday. Jennifer is an Oakham's resident. She has taught in the past at Leslie in both special ed and a general classroom, I believe. And she will be teaching fourth grader Hiawatha. Taught at Mason too. Well, that doesn't count. Michigan State doesn't count.
Oh, great.
Yeah. All right. Thanks. Eddie Fletcher. I didn't make it here. He's taught for 15 or 16 years in Brooklyn. He's a math teacher at the high school. He's got all sorts of accolades from teaching there, and he's a an Oakham's grad.
Miss Brad.
And we welcome back to town. So let's see. Abigail Foster Mills, a math teacher, no, I'm sorry, science teacher at the high school. And she didn't make it here. She comes from she's subbed for the last number of years, but before that she taught at Howell. And for about a year, and so she's coming here for science at the high school. Carlos Selayes.
Selayes.
Yeah, Selayes. Well, I don't read too well. Carlos comes to here from Waverly and Lansing and National Heritage Academy. He's been teaching for about 12 years. And he's going to be a science teacher at Chippewa and also doing some reading for our MLL students there. So he does both of those. So welcome. Okay, Ursula Gossmacher. Oh, well, I mean, I don't even know if I read it well or said it correctly, but she's going to be an orchestra teacher at Kinnawha and Chippewa. She's been a violin teacher or a strings teacher for the Suzuki program for a number of years, and will join the join the music programs. So welcome to her. Uh, Carrie Brekowski. Cherry is not here. She comes from Evergreen Middle School. She doesn't tell her district. She also she's been an interventionist. She's been a ELA in World Area Studies, and she's going to be teaching English Language Arts at Kinnawha. Not quite a full time position. And then Lindsey Ferguson, who is going to be teaching ELA at Kinnawha, also a five, six position. So Lindsey is not here either. Okay, that's the end of our teachers. The administrators did yeoman's work interviewing this summer and went through a lot of applications, did a lot of interviewing. We had quite a few retirees. And then we had teachers resigning throughout the summer. We still have a few positions that will be hard to fill. There's a speech and language pathologist that resigned a couple of weeks ago. There's an autism special ed teacher that resigned recently. And we've got some part time positions that are
Social work position.
Have a social work position. Probably at the elementary school.
Yes.
Um, because one of our internal social workers has requested to move to the high school. So that's where we are with our hiring. Miss one. Okay. Last, I have our new principal. Katie Jason has been around here for six years as a teacher at Cornell. And she is taking over as the principal at the Montessori program here in this building. So we welcome her to her new role. Wish her well. And there's a bunch of people, administrators up and down that are willing to help you out if you make this transition, which is not an easy one. So welcome and good luck.
And as is our tradition with the new administrator fire, Katie just wanted to introduce you at the podium. If you had a few words to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter, for the introduction. I just wanted to say a quick thank you to the board and the entire Oakham's community for the kind welcome into this new role. I am grateful to be Oakham's Public Montessori's new principal. It has been wonderful getting to know the staff, students and families at OPM over the past few weeks. We have had a strong start to our school year, and it's been a joy to see our building filled with engaged learners, happy faces and lots of, are you the principal? As a lifelong learner, I will be partaking in the Montessori training throughout the year and learning alongside my staff and my students. I cannot wait to see the growth and learning that happens this year, and thank you again.
That's my list.
Thanks, Pete. Awesome. Wonderful. Well, I just want to say, yes.
And don't feel like you have to stay if you, yeah.
Yeah, no, just on behalf of the board. Thank you so much for choosing Oakham's. We're really glad you're here.
You have to work tomorrow and yes, so. You're welcome to stay. Yes, but don't feel like you have to.
Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is discussion move forward regarding meeting efficiency. So again, you're going to have to forgive me. President Buffett came in much more prepared to lead this discussion than I am at this moment, but he was kind enough to email me some some notes here to kind of help start the discussion. So as many of you recall, at our retreat, one of the things that came out of that was a desire to be more intentional about our use of time as a board and how we're how we're using time, how we're structuring our meetings, et cetera. So we kind of discussed this a little bit during our executive committee, kind of just some ideas. We were just kind of brainstorming. We want to kind of bring that here to the board to have a kind of more broader discussion, get any ideas that you might have think of ways how we can be more efficient as a board during our meeting. So and I have this list here. I'll just kind of go from it. And I'll go through everything and then maybe we can just kind of have an open table discussion. Does that work? Okay, great. Kind of ideas that we had. So many of you have noticed previously, we've had times on our on our agendas for certain topics. The issue with that is sometimes, you know, we've had issue situations where the presentation takes up 85% of the time, and then there's a lot of questions, and then we inevitably go over, and then the board members feel like we're not able to answer the questions. Then or on the flip side, there's way more questions, right? And we don't, we get out of control sometimes, I would say, and we kind of get off topic in some sense. So kind of we're trying to brainstorm ways to kind of plan that in these agenda times. And one idea that we had was to kind of make it whatever time here you see. We're going to do half dedicated to whatever the presentation is and then dedicate half of that time to questions. So we'll kind of be more deliberate about when those presentations come up that they are completed, and that way we have additional time at the end for questions because those are very important as well. We want all board members to feel heard and have any questions that they have answered. So that's one thing we kind of had an idea on. Another thing we had an idea on was kind of putting together a year at a glance calendar, and we kind of have a dream. I wouldn't say it's ready for prime time, prime time yet, but it's had a good start in terms of kind of you'd be able to look at a one sheet and it shows every month and okay, we're going to be working on that this month, or I can look forward to February, we're going to be doing this. Kind of just so you can kind of real quick look at what's coming up in terms of our agendas. And also will help administration as well, planning that way they can kind of keep keep an eye on what's coming and they can prepare for those as well. Another thing we talked about was norms. And I'm bringing here. Then Tom had two ideas for norms during the meetings that kind of would help with efficiency. And I'm just reading for what he said. Pause to let other trustees ask questions first before going to a second question, meaning you know, we can always ask a clarifying question if it's not clear, but kind of make a point to make sure every board member has an opportunity to ask a question before we go around for a second round of questions. Also, whenever there's a situation where you have questions about a presentation prior to the meeting, and you might send that question to to superintendent hood to also send that to the board president as well, just to help with with board meeting planning. And just so we're clear, that's specific to meeting related questions. It's not like you have to CC Tom on every or trustee Buffett, forgive me, on every email that you send, but just kind of so we can make sure we have our meetings buttoned down going into into those. And then another idea that we really had, we're trying to really kind of look at this whole board reports portion of the agenda. And really kind of rather than turn it's, I mean, I'm sure a lot of it's been like this since I've been on the board. It's kind of like a news and views kind of section right now. You know what I mean? Kind of talking about, you know, maybe, you know, something that happened around the district or something you want to report. We're kind of thinking it might make the most sense to kind of turn that into more of a committee reporting structure. So the committees can report out what they did during, you know, the last time, you know, in between meetings. However, we don't want to lose that portion where we kind of learn from each other and kind of spread some good news or what's happening. So we're talking about doing this, and these are two ideas for names, kind of like a mission minute or around the pack, kind of like at the beginning of every meeting going around. And if a board member has something they want to report on, or you know, something that happened, or something you want to make sure everyone's aware of, or invite people to, you know, you'll have an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting for all those. We thought that might be good as well, just because the beginning of our meetings, more people are engaged, you know, especially in the public, which is, you know, help get some of that information out there as well. So you know, the purpose of this, make sure we create space for this kind of like sharing while we can keep board reports and requests focused on committees and actual board requests. So anyway, I know that was a lot. But I guess open up for discussion on thoughts. These are just ideas. This was kind of a brainstorming. So trustee Kavanaugh.
I like that idea of what were his suggested names. He might want
I believe mission minute and around the path were two ideas, but those were very rough.
Very rough. I like that idea a lot because we do want to, we've talked about that before, wanting to have good news, sharing things that are cool going on in the district. So having a designated time seems great to me. So we'll just tweak the names a little bit.
And if you have an idea, please send it in to us. Trustee Doxy, did I miss anything from our meeting? I want to make sure I'm
No, I think you did a good recap. And again, these were just some brainstorm ideas. So definitely welcome. Excuse me, our trustees input on those suggestions for efficiencies for our meetings. So great job. And don't feel compelled to like share now reflect. We had time to reflect. So just again, reach out to President Buffett or myself or VP Phelps, and the exec committee will continue discussions to flesh out. So thank you.
Great. Awesome. Well, we'll kind of, you know, let that marinate a little bit. Make sure you send us any ideas, but those are kind of the ideas that we have right now going forward. I know the times on the agenda today are kind of planned with our with this whole kind of half and half idea in mind. So just kind of, we'll kind of see how that works. I mean, that's kind of might be a work in progress, but just kind of so you're aware. So wonderful. All right. We'll move to the next item discussion move forward for a bond update superintendent hood.
Thank you, trustee Phelps. So we have our bond planning team here again, representing some veritas Tower Pinkster and Chrisman providing our kind of summer updates on the 2022 bond. You're going to see some great pictures of the work from Chippewa or envisioning of some Cornell renderings and updates on bid packages three, four, and eight, as well as some energy savings projects. So let me bring this up, and I think I forgot to download it. So my apologies. Just give me a second.
Well, John, while you're downloading, I can go through the first couple of slides and remind the community and the board who we have with us tonight. Ashley Dunnebeck with Tower Pinkster, representing the design team and Shane Lonsberry with the Chrisman team, representing your construction manager. We do have a full agenda tonight, and we will be efficient with our time, and we will give Shane two minutes and Ashley three, and we will save time for questions. We do have a lot to cover. The first slide has a lot of construction updates, a lot of photos, and then we will get into the updated design for Cornell. Making presentation mode.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Like full screen.
I think that's No, I think it's fine, actually. Thank you. Yeah, I think it's as small as I can get it. All right.
Great. So John, I think we can probably head to the first update slide. Yep. So just here for two updates, no bid results tonight, but updates for the board. And then I'll let Shane take two whole minutes and do an update.
Sure. Well, over at Chippewa, we're in full swing on earth, everything from earthwork to concrete, CMU, masonry. And we're even starting to paint and some of the competition gyms up here on the board. You can see over on the left hand side, these are the classroom wings or actually have the foundations in now, but this is all the underground electrical and all the underground utilities that are in for the classroom wings. On the right hand side, that's the actual track infield. We've got the grading done, and currently we're installing underground electrical in that area. On the left hand side here, this is the cafeteria for Chippewa and Kinnawha, the new cafeteria with commons room above. And then we've got both of our stair shafts in in the old courtyard area. Well, sorry, over here, where were we? Where were? What's that? Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. So this is the new gym. We've got the new decorative CMU installed. And actually, if you drive by there now, we've got the blue metal panels going up over the this is insulation. This is not a final product up here on top. That's that's in spray foam insulation. So we do put some pretty metal panels over top of that. On the right hand side, you can see we have the new competition gym all painted out with the with the maroon and blue striping. This picture here is the auditorium. So they're working on overhead. You can see the lifts in there. The the catwalk is up in structural catwalk, and currently they're doing fire suppression and electrical up a pad and we're working to HVAC. Moving to big pack four, this was the pool improvements that is completed. It's just a complete picture, and they're using it, and we've got a certificate of occupancy for that area. The greenhouse bid pack eight. So this is moving into bid pack eight. The greenhouse has its new brick and new capstone on it. We just are waiting on gutters, but it's it's a it's an eye catcher when you drive around there now. On the right hand side, these are the bathrooms as you walk in through the student entrance, the tile, we went with the tile floor. And as opposed to the epoxy, and it turned out really nice. That actually will be turned over. We're just doing a final walk and it'll be turned over here and within a week.
So yes, those are older pictures. We do have partitions.
Yep, we do have partitions.
Please don't email me.
Yeah. And this is the addition. And if you drive by there now, we actually have walls all up. And they'll start doing the structural steel here within the within a week. So we're moving fast. Sorry, the pictures are weak old, and it looks way different now. Uh, where are we at now? Oh, this is the inside. Yeah, you see the so the CMU, we're setting window frames in patching in the CMU for the the band and orchestra rooms. And then over here, we're getting all the overhead done. And we're actually starting to, we moved so fast, we're starting to do carpet and
Lockers are in there. Lockers. I saw those today. They're great.
Yeah. All right. Any questions on updates? All right. Thank you.
All right. So for Cornell Elementary, we have just finished our design development phase, and we're now proceeding into construction documents. So it's our time to really document everything before it goes out to bid in February.
I have mentioned, I think February is right.
I think we're end of the year.
Yeah. That February date is adjust that. It's December.
Yeah.
Yes.
Some of our critical success factors that we as we've been designing the building, we've been trying to stand by these as we go through and make a lot of our decisions. And our focus areas as we go, green space, flexibility, future growth, curriculum requirements, those sort of things. Keep moving on. Um, so this is the site plan similar to what we saw in schematic design, our last board update. We have kind of three main pieces. The existing building is here. So whole new kind of rework of the site. The new elementary will sit in the middle of the current site. We have a separate bus loop, parent staff parking and a parent drop off loop. So really separating those three uses off Cornell and then having a fire lane that goes around the whole building. Playground spaces out the back of the school and then field areas along the north, trying to maintain as much of that field space as we can. As we will look at a few images from the outside of the building, this is that front entry from Cornell Road. This is that parking lot in the front. This is the main entry as you come into the building. Uh, this is kind of turning just a little bit more that front entries on your left hand side. And this is we're looking more from the parent drop off loop at the building. This is from the back of the school. So this is the classroom wings on either side, and the glass area in the center is a learning commons on both floors that the students will be able to get daylight directly out to the playground area. This is a view. Once you walk into the building from that main entrance, looking down the main corridor. And all the way straight down is towards the classroom wings. All the main functions of the building are accessed off this corridor and classrooms toward the back. This is the gym. So following a lot with the brand standards that we're doing at Chippewa and other buildings in the district. Having that branding here in Cornell as well. This is media center. So having a lot of daylight coming into media center and flexibility space. This is cafeteria. This space will look out to the playground for recess after lunch. This is the restroom view. So both all restrooms are right in the center of the classroom wings. And so open kind of view to those. This is the main stair that connects the first and second floors. So as you walk into the classroom wing, this is the first piece that you see directly behind this is the learning commons, and that's that glass area in the center of the classroom wings from the outside. So both grade levels will be able to come and use this space. This is a view of that learning commons and right outside would be the the playground. And this is a typical classroom setup. Any questions towards the Cornell design?
Yeah, trustee win.
Um, I was just going to say, I noticed that this version has an extra field labeled on there. So I really appreciate that because that was the feedback that I know I and others had given last time is we wanted to get as many fields as we can on there. So thank you so much for adding that second word field on there. I really appreciated that.
Yeah, as we have all the design too, we're able to kind of work through a lot and add some of those things. So, yeah, that was great.
Just a Kavanaugh.
Thank you. This looks so pretty. I had a question about all of the glass in the
Yeah.
So I know that we've retrofitted everything shatter resistant glasses. This is going to be already set up that way.
Yeah, as the standard school guard glass similar to what we've done at other buildings in the district, kind of following that same suit.
Okay, thanks. Oh, oh, I want to start the new protocol. Wait.
Anybody else or trustee Kavanaugh? No, there you go again.
I'm just curious about solar panels. Have we did we talk about doing those anywhere? Or is there any opportunity for anything like that?
Yeah, we have. We reviewed it feasibility financially. It doesn't make sense for the district to make it simple. We could do it as a symbol, but it would not be financial. We haven't found a financial way to make sense of it. Uh, so briefly, the energy savings projects, train your vendors on on in districts, taking care of a number of your HVAC problems across districts. So every time we come back with a bond update, we'll just give you an update on the latest. They anticipate being done in about the next 12 months. So Bennett Woods received new rooftop units this last week. Kinnawha Middle School has a lot of ongoing work tackling the most critical elements and that were prioritized by your operations team. And then high school is a high priority, and they're working to get that gymnasium and HVAC improved here as soon as possible. So it's the next thing on the list. So future bond updates will come back in October. We'll get a chance to host you all again for a walkthrough at Chippewa. You're going to see a lot of great new progress there. And then we'll we'll bring back construction updates for bid package eight and a design update for bid package five baseball softball that has taken has recently started. New furniture. It's one thing we didn't have today. We do have new furniture that was delivered to Kinnawha. We don't have photos for you, but we'll get them. We'll get them on the bond website. We'll make sure we have them for the next bond update. And then we'll be planning to be back in January with bid results for Cornell. And a bond overview update. Um, as always, the the bond website has got a lot of information. We'll make sure that this presentation is on and all the bond website has got a lot of information. We'll make sure that this, uh, presentation is on and all the previous so that people can look at all the great renderings that, uh, the new, new buildings that we have coming. With that, are there any more questions for the bond team?
Any questions? I have a couple. Um, hopefully very simple. Are we still on time with Chippewa? Is there any delays?
We're still on time.
Fantastic news. Um, and then just kind of, Shane, how many people are there on a daily basis? I was dropping my daughter off this morning at the high school and it looked like there was probably a hundred cars in the parking lot. I know that's probably impressive, but it looked very busy.
We are averaging about a hundred, uh, at Chippewa and about 25 over at high school.
Per day. Wow. Okay. Awesome. And it's just one kind of just, and I don't need an answer to this right now, but I was looking at the bond updates the other day. And I love the updates on the website. They look like though unfortunately they're written for a construction manager rather than John and Jane Q public. And these updates are amazing that the board gets, you know, some of the pictures.
One pager.
Yeah, the one pager. Yeah. I mean, like, I could read through it, but I would encourage you, some of it looks, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's, it's a little in the weeds. How about that? So I, I think it'd be awesome just putting it out there. If in those updates, we could get some of the stuff that we get here and from board. I mean, these pictures are beautiful and I'd love the community to be able to see those as well.
Okay.
Yeah. And that has been the intention. We realized it didn't happen. So I've been, I owe Shannon a couple of emails with some previous bond updates. So for that reason, we're sharing this information with everyone.
And you will see those exact same pictures on the bond update that's coming out, the August bond update. Cause I saw, I saw them, the newsletter. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. And that, so that technical document from Chris was really supposed to supplement this. And I think that was something that we just missed and we'll get updated.
Yeah. I just think the, the community would really appreciate that because this is beautiful. This is beautiful stuff. I mean, the community is in making significant investments in the community. I want them to make sure that they see the fruit of that. So that's great. Wonderful. Anything else? Awesome. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, the next thing, we have a discussion move forward on a emergency facilities purchase, uh, superintendent hood.
Yeah. Thank you again. I've asked director Lieber to come here to update you on a emergency summer project, uh, that I authorized director Lieber to do. Uh, I'm reviewing our purchasing policy. It allows for the superintendent to, um, give permission for an emergency, uh, project. Um, and also waves me having to go for bid on that. And director Lieber is gonna tell you a little bit on why and, um, why they had to happen this summer. So that'll be up behind you in a moment here, Brian. Let's, let's, uh, Nathan pops out here.
Hardest working guy here.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nate. Yep. Uh, so in the spring of last year, we started noticing some settling around this tunnel. If you look here, it looks like a sidewalk. They're around this building. They're around Chippewa. Um, really that's just a cap to the tunnel. We noticed a lot of settling around it. Cracks in the cap itself, uh, had it evaluated by a couple of professionals and we quickly rerouted car line away from those areas. Cause it was clear that the tunnel itself was collapsing. Uh, once the school year was over, we started on a project. Um, we had to get all those utilities that were in there rerouted somehow. We had to pull the cap off. It was 12 inches thick and it clearly been repaired in the past, just not well. Um, upon investigation, once we got the cap off, we realized how bad the insides of the tunnel were. Those walls weren't built with any sort of reinforcement. So they were collapsing. Uh, the tunnel, as I said before, was part of the OPM car line, which also makes it more complicated because it has to be able to support traffic going over top. Uh, John authorized me to use emergency funds or his emergency clause to get this done as quickly as possible because time was critical. Summer was something that's disruptive to car line. It's critical. We get this done in a very tight window. Um, and we got this completed about a month ago. Uh, so we had to remove the concrete cap. We had to remove asphalt on either side, about two feet out. If you bend back there, you can see it looks different now. Um, we had to move the utilities. So there's electrical, water drains, gas, old steam lines, all had to get moved and rerouted. Um, had to fill it in with P stone, stabilize both sides of the walls, lay asphalt over top. All that was completed this summer. It was numerous trades. Um, I use Crispin construct, Crispin construction. I'm in the bond world in my head. Nielsen construction, they've done tons of projects with us in the past and I knew they were available. So they were able to come out, do this, work with me on it, help me find all the trades I needed to get this done. Cause it was quite the task really. Um, the total cost was eighty four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and it came out of the sinking fund. Any questions?
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Any questions from board or superintendent?
Just, uh, a note that this will be on the next agenda, just as an action item, uh, to approve the expenditure. Um, the board policy allows me to expend, but I still need board approval. Um, even though it's going to come after, um, so just as a point of process for everyone. And then while direct director Lieber was here, I just wanted a quick Kinnawal updates. Um, and I know we had some Cornell issues that we were dealt with. So just anything you wanted to say while you're up about those.
Uh, first Kinnawal, phase one of that completed this summer. It was much easier and much smoother when there was no one in the building. Um, completed the last section of that. Uh, we have now phase two, which we need to start on with, which is not classroom areas. It's areas like the gym, the auditorium, the cafeteria. We're not expecting big, huge projects to come from that, but we do have to get an estimation, estimates on all that work that needs to happen. I don't expect it to be anything like phase one. But we still need to figure out exactly what it's going to take to finish off the rest of the building. We'll bring that back to you for approval, just like we did with phase one. Uh, also phase two will include just a little additional work to eliminate some root causes that we discovered. Nothing major, just things we want to make sure we get done. So we can move on. Cornell, uh, Cornell was an incident that we've had before in Oakhamis. It's an incident that other districts deal with. Our older buildings are built without vapor barriers or insulation in the floor, which means the floors get wet. And when they get wet and it gets hot and humid outside, the HVAC systems in the schools really are only designed to keep kids comfortable in the spring and fall, not deal with the heat of the summer. And if we have week after week of high heat and humidity, it is possible to have mold growth on the carpet. It's not the carpet itself. It's actually the dust that grows mold. Now that the humidity is broken and we've gotten any little issues that we did have in the school dealt with, it's now occupied. It's getting cleaned daily. We don't expect this to come back. So we're not the only ones that have this problem. It's something that happens. And it's why it's great. The community is giving us three new buildings. So we won't have these issues in the new ones.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, any questions from board?
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Director Lieber. Next, we have a discussion move forward on a thirty five J grant superintendent hood.
So Assistant Superintendent Bailey, um, has been working hard, um, uh, obtaining additional grants, obviously for our teachers and actually from their money. Sharing thirty five J grants, uh, professional developments that, um, has and will continue to produce some high quality teaching and materials for our students. So I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bailey to share this exciting news.
Yeah. So I've been talking about this grant for two years. We've had it. Um, it's almost to the end. It ends September thirtieth of this year. So, um, this is one of the final projects that we started in the spring of this year. So our classroom, um, teachers pre K through fifth grade. Um, excuse me, kindergarten through fifth grade of how different things for libraries, um, are getting, uh, money for a classroom library. So one of the essential literacy elements for the state is that we have abundant reading materials available for students. So this grant allowed us to, um, provide, uh, approximately $2,400 to teachers, um, on classroom books. So this included, um, PE exploratory, uh, ML teachers, um, and they all took part in the required training as part of the grant as well. So tonight you have before you a request, um, later on, uh, just for the purchase of these books, um, and you'll see another one coming up, um, at your next meeting as well.
Great. Wonderful. Any questions?
And I just want to clarify, that's for our K five teachers and that's not a total of 2,500. That's per, per room. Correct, Stacy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Which is why the, the bid is over. The bid limit, it will be.
Hundred seventeen thousand dollars. So kudos for that, that type of library being added to every, to all those learning spaces is an amazing opportunity for our, for our students.
Trustee Doxy.
Thank you. Thank you for, um, your efforts on this grant and working with the staff. Can you share what process was used to determine which, uh, books were approved or and how the teachers went about selecting, uh, the books for the classroom and making sure that there's diverse literature for the students? Thank you.
Yes. So, um, we, we have this at the tail end because we wanted all of the teachers to go through the required literacy training. So they knew what they were looking for. Uh, we were fortunate, um, to have one of our teachers at Cornell, um, last year or the year before, you might remember, work with the ISD. They got $10,000 on their classroom library. And so they had a really vetted process of what they were going through and how we identify high quality materials. And so we mimicked that process in what we did with our teachers. I'll say our instructional coaches at all of the buildings were instrumental in this. Um, not only supporting the leading of this professional learning, but also working directly with those teachers to do an inventory of what you already have in your classroom and then identify where those gaps might be, whether, um, looking at gaps for diversity of different cultures being represented. Looking at, um, different reading levels being accessible, making sure that there were books that tied into that content for that grade level. Um, so looking at it from a lot of different perspectives to think about how do we provide these robust classrooms? And I think it's amazing that like a student anywhere in our district, going into any second grade class is going to have that same level of opportunity before them. So, um, it's a great opportunity. And, uh, anecdotally, what I've heard from teachers is these sorts of things, like I never remember it happening as a teacher, you know, you kind of go to garage sales and you get a hundred dollars here and there. So, um, I know that they're very appreciative and they've put a lot of time over the last few months into this process to make sure that they've selected those highly, um, high quality reading, um, materials for their students.
Any other questions? Assistant Superintendent Bailey?
And we will be asking for the board to waive the adequate, adequate information. So we can vote on this later this evening and get those books ordered and hands those teachers and students.
And it is through a pre-bid.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you, superintendent. That's actually our next, uh, agenda item. If I can have a motion, please.
A LC twenty five oh three A requirements and take action on whether to adopt the thirty five J grant.
Support.
Moved by trustee Kavanaugh, seconded by trustee when, is there any discussion on the motion? Great. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those against? Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Wonderful. Um, we are now at the point of the agenda where citizens can address, uh, the board. At this time in the meeting, citizens will have an opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest that may or may not be part of this evening's agenda. Citizens are required to limit comments to three minutes, except when this requirement is waived by the board president during the meeting. Designated timekeeper will communicate with the individual who is addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment and input. However, the board meeting format is designed to facilitate the evening's agenda and therefore restricts board members from engaging in conversation with speakers or immediately responding to questions. Questions and concerns may be addressed by the board later in the agenda and may be assigned for follow-up by the board or superintendent at a later date. We do have one blue card today, um, Ryan Doyle. If you go ahead to the podium, state your name and address.
Uh, for the record, my name is Ryan Doyle. My address is four one nine three Indian Glen Drive, Oakhamis. I'm a proud resident of Oakhamis and the proud parent of two children in the Oakhamis school system. I would like to first start by stating how encouraged I am by the visible progress on the rebuilding of Chippewa. Uh, I look forward to its eventual opening day and new construction beginning on Kinnawal and Cornell. So thank you to the board and superintendent hood for your continued efforts to improve our district's facilities. I have two concerns to raise to this board's attention this evening. First, I would like to add context to the email I sent to each of you, uh, regarding the old varsity fields, current state of disrepair. In my attempts to address this, I visited the superintendent's office and was directed to contact the director of operations. After a week of unreturned voicemails to the office, I visited Chippewa's main office with assistant there, tried their best to help resolve my concerns. Despite these efforts, it took 10 more days before the fields were mowed, actually at the start of the first school day. Uh, the other issues I raised in my email still remain as of today. Now I recognize the current conditions of old varsity fields may be an unintended consequence of the construction being undertaken at Chippewa. Uh, however, I believe that we can do better. These fields are vital spaces, public spaces, especially when school is not in session. Secondly, in my attempts to resolve this, I noticed that the phone number listed on Oakhamis school website, five one seven seven zero six five thousand disconnects immediately when dialed. I tried calling for multiple numbers. Uh, when I mentioned this to the superintendent's office, I was informed that a recent phone system upgrade may be causing the issue. I understand that technical transitions can take time. However, I encourage the board to ensure that public facing contact information is fully operational and monitored, especially for families and community members trying to engage with district leadership. I respectfully ask the board and superintendent to review this feedback and consider improvements to both field maintenance protocols and communication pathways. Our youth and our community deserves safe, well-kept spaces that reflect the values of Oakhamis. Thank you for your time and attention to these matters.
Thank you. Are there any other blue cards? Trustee Doxy? Um, Mr. Brown, is there anyone online?
No, not mine.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, we will move forward to superintendent reports on what superintendent hood.
Sorry. A few updates, uh, for members of the community. So I met with township manager Dempsey today, uh, regarding the future of the Meridian Township Senior Center. Uh, at the township's request, uh, I reiterated to manager Dempsey that the district had planned a space at the new Chippewa build as part of our 2022 bond project, but that planning ceased at the township's request three years ago. Um, three years ago, the township approached us and said they would not be utilizing that space. And they were pursuing an outside community senior center and the district was not to plan, uh, for a future senior center. So I want to be clear with members of our community because I had, uh, three members of the community reach out upset at the school district for not finding a home for the, um, for the senior center after the, the millage went down for the senior center. And that was not our decision. It's not our program. Um, we were planning to find a home and then we're told not to. Um, so we, we stopped, uh, that planning. So that opportunity was lost at the new Chippewa build. Uh, I did share with, uh, township manager Dempsey that, um, we don't currently have spaces available, uh, for the senior center. But depending on our available future planning, uh, after 2031, uh, we may have other, um, opportunities for a senior center depending on, uh, board decisions for our long range planning and future bonds that could be approved by our community for, for other build outs. But at this time, unfortunately, there is no space, uh, in the Oakhamis schools for us, for us, for a senior center. Yeah. The senior center will be, uh, in existence at, uh, Chippewa at its current site until 2028. So they have three years to find, uh, a, a new home. We deeply value our seniors. I've enjoyed that relationship. Um, and, uh, if I had space, I, I would talk to the board about offering it, but I have to program for the district first and we just don't have that space right now. Just want that to be clear to our community members. And of course we work very closely with Meridian Township and are going to keep that relationship and, and conversations going. Okay. Uh, work on the street lighting near Hewlett Road and Oakhamis High School was underway. Um, ballards, um, for the crosswalk there have been approved. And that lighting, uh, safety measure is underway. I want to thank some of our community members for bringing that back up to the township before school started. As you recall, uh, last year at this time, we were having similar conversations about the lighting at Hewlett Road, specifically near the stadium where students cross. So thanks to the Oakhamis community and Meridian Township for, um, um, getting that in our, our commissioner polls door for, for getting that underway and completed soon, especially before the fall darkness hits. Uh, director Lieber met with our state regulator, uh, regarding replacement of the OHS fire alarm system as well as our local fire authorities, uh, as he's planning for, as you know, replacement of that entire system after the lightning strike last spring at Oakhamis High School. They were reviewing the plan for the new alarm when the state regulator, um, reviewed our plan for our current status. And the state regulator put some additional requirements upon us to provide a fire watch throughout the building. Uh, even though our alarms can be heard throughout, um, because, um, it's being replaced. And if we had the lightning strike, uh, it's a requirement for us to provide that from six AM to 10 PM every day. Um, every day the building is open. So we, um, are working with our insurance company to see if costs for that fire watch, um, can be offset by insurance. If not, those will need to be built into the revised budget. We really have no say in the matter. In order for us to have occupancy, the fire marshal can say what we need to do. And we're going to follow suit for safety. So Dr. Kemzley has worked with, uh, high school staff to make sure the students know who those folks are that are, that pretty much walk the halls. Um, daily, uh, while that system is being replaced and the plan. daily while that system is being replaced and the plans are approved and put into place. So just wanted folks, some folks thought I put fire watch in and I was spending money on that. It's it's the state regulator and the fire marshal that are requiring that at the Oakhamus schools. And of course, we're into what we need to do to abide by their their safety rules for us. Okay, yes. Yes, we've hired a company to do that. So the company helps take on that role. And any liability associated with it, but they're a company, there's paperwork they have to fill out and submit to the state regulator and fire marshal, and they're used to providing this type of service. Um, we talked about Kinnawa remediation. C A D hints is working on an agreement with a potential co-op and has it for gymnastics that would add no financial cost to the district. Has it would have the gymnastics co-op and we would look at heading the existing hockey co-op and we're working on trying to get Bath and Hazlet to approve, to approve that. If we need some approval for that, that'll come for you to you in September. We surveyed students of interest for a gymnastics experience and 10 current seniors and five current juniors showed interest. We might out of those, we might get, you know, half of those to actually participate in a gymnastic experience with a co-op. So excited about that potential opportunity for our students. I'm going to invite Director Kremkow up now to provide a brief update on our decision to switch to our free and reduced lunch service. And with some rationale to share with the community on that, someone up switch to this presentation mode really quick and we'll just take a few minutes to give an update on that. So this is Brian Kremkow, our director of food services. Welcome, Brian.
Welcome.
And we have Nate coming out.
Yep. Okay, let me start off first as far as there's was a lot of thought and discussion on the decision was made as far as how we wanted to approach meals for this year. So I just kind of wanted to inform you guys as the rationale, we were looking at the big picture items and what we went back and forth with as far as how we were going to provide food service for this next year. So with the uncertainty that was happening with the the state, we weren't sure how funding was going to be coming through for this next school year. So looked at it three possibilities, no funding for food service. Second could be as far as lump sum funding, meaning it could be one lump sum that's put in with the per student funding. It doesn't necessarily have to be for food service. Or the other option would be allocated funding where it's 100% for the food service. So the allocated funding is what we've had the past couple of years. That is where we get solely money. Nothing else can be touched for that. We get reimbursed from that along with some other federal funds. So that would be the win-win scenario. But the reality of the situation going into that unknown, we had to make some decisions. So things also that is unique to Oakhamus, we are a non-CEP district. A lot of our neighboring communities are a CEP as far as participating districts, so they get more federal funding than what we do. So and then as far as when the funding actually comes through and everything gets organized, it may not be until after September, maybe the middle of October. So we needed to have a plan in place that was going to be organized. Hopefully we can make it as seamless as possible throughout the school year without impacting as much as we can.
Brian, could you explain what C E P is versus the Michigan meal plan? Just really quickly.
Okay, CEP is a community eligible provision. And so what it is is basically if the certain number of families are under a certain income level in your community, they don't have to automatically apply for free or reduced meals. Your district can will automatically qualify for if you go through that grant system, you will get funds as far as from the federal funds. So our income for our district as far as our families, we are about 17% of what we qualify for free and reduced meals. Typically for CEP, they're going to be looking at like 25, 20%. So we're not far from the threshold, but we don't qualify for those funds. There's not many other districts in the area that are non-CEP. You know, Lansing is CEP, Mason is CEP, Polte is CVP, our most likely neighbor is is over in Williamson is non-CEP. So they're kind of in the same bill. So they can get federal funding, but we as a district really benefited for the food service wise from the state program because we got a lot more money from the state. So what we had to look at as far as the decision we came up with was going with the traditional model of charging as far as students for meals. Okay. A lot of thought went into that because financially, the district couldn't afford to go into the models as far as paying for it ourselves. And what we were looking at is as far as participation levels for students. I'm kind of all over the place here, but what I'm going to say is participation levels were 1600 when students were paying for meals. When they were free from state, our participation was at 4,000. So we're over almost three times amount of participation, which is excellent from feeding a kid stamp. With those with that, you have to look at changes in funding as far as staff members, how we're purchasing and doing all those things. So charging for meals, going with a conservative model. And then as far as how we were going to be doing that, encouraging families to to apply for free and reduced meals, which then covered federally for them. There's, there's nothing as far as stopping it from applying. And then also going under the guise that we are going to feed students regardless, whether it's a charged meal, whether it's a free meal. If we have to go with negative balance, we're never going to turn a kid away. They're always going to have the option to have a reimbursed or what I would call is a complete meal. Nobody's going to go hungry. We're not going to do anything to make anybody an outlier. Okay. So but one thing I want to keep in mind is when we set the prices for the meals for the year, we are actually going to be subsidizing about a dollar on each one of these meals out of our own budget at this point in time. We may have to revisit that once we see the big picture as far as what comes from the state. But at this point in time, we're going to, we're kicking in some of our own money just to make sure everybody can eat. So the reason as far as what we were looking at with that paid model is really we're looking at consistency. I looked at it from a parent standpoint. I wouldn't rather not start off with a free meals and have to go to paid meals and then have to go through about one into it, trying to figure out what was going on that. We were looking at consistency for staffing. You know, six, you know, 4,000 kids versus 1600, I need to have different staffing levels. I'm not going to have people throughout the year and then have big changes as far as that happens. And then the big thing is making sure people are aware for signing up for free and reduced meals. You know, right now, at this point in time, we ran a report on Monday that we've had a year ago, we had 105 students put applications in were accepted. This last week, same timeframe, a year later, we're at 300. So we're up at three times and I'm getting them still throughout the day. I'm still getting 15, 20 applications per day. So people are taking advantage of that program. And that program not is not just for food service. It benefits the district as a whole with other programs and other supplements. One thing that we are looking at and we are keeping in mind is that we were starting off with this paid model. If allocation funding comes through, we have the ability to switch to offer free meals. So the big picture planning was looking at, okay, I'm going to let people know they're going to have to pay. If it comes through state and it's allocated funding, we're going to participate at that point in time and then offer free meals. So I'd rather do paid meals than go free versus free than oh, you have to pay now. So I just kind of thought that was the fair way to go. We already covered as far as the increase in numbers. And we're looking at, once we find out the budget, we're going to have a better idea where we're going to go. And as far as reallocating any funds that we have at the moment to try to cover this, everything that we have in our general fund for food service is pretty much allocated out with as far as what's spending for spend down plans for purchases that are included as far as for some bond programs, we're going to be purchasing offsetting that with some purchases from our funds. So we don't have the money necessarily to throw at the program completely.
So I want to just clarify a couple of things. So when we looked at this decision, we know there was a state budget in funding through the end of, end of September. And we had to work on the what-if scenarios. What if that funding goes away? And our kids that would get free and reduced haven't filled out their applications and October 1st hits. How are we going to feed those kids? We made the decision to make sure that we are focusing on consistent service, especially to those resource limited families. We will already have them in our system now. Should the should the funding not be there and they can get some of some of these kids, it's the only meal they get. The free and reduce kids. So now that they're signed up, if that decision comes through and we have full funding, we can expand it. If we don't get full funding and it resorts to the model that we're currently using, we already have the system in place for those free and reduced kids, the kids that are resource limited that need to eat here at school. So we know Oakhamus is an outlier on this. But we wanted to plan for that unknown October 1st state decision that is pending. And you may have seen today, there's even talk about a shutdown and the budget going further into the unknown realm. By statute, we're supposed to have the budget by July 1st for the school district. We don't have it. And ramping up and down these this food service isn't as easy as some would say. So we're trying to focus again on those resource limited families and making sure they have consistent access. Any questions for Director Kremkow before I conclude my report? Yes. Uh, trustee Doxy.
Yes, thank you for the update. I have two questions, but I will ask one. My turn. So my first question, if I understood you, I think I heard you say the district is subsidizing meals for about a dollar. Is that for all students or for those that have reduced? You know, pay reduced rate.
That this would be for the students that are paying right now as far as the family's putting money in account, paying the 350 per meal. The actual cost of that right now is about four, four 60. Okay. So we're subsidizing about a dollar. We, before we change any rates and everything, we'd have to go through a board approval. At the time we had to make that decision, we had to go with rates that were set by a prior board. And we felt that was the prudent way to go. Plus economically it was like, well, we're going to share some of the burden till we figure this out for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Burns.
Sure. Do you have a sense of, you know, if state funding comes through, how long it would take to scale up to, but we've done the last two years?
So we've got that contingent in place as far as what we needed to do. So obviously that state funding comes through, we're going to expect more participation numbers. So that means more staffing. So we've got a kind of a plan in place, what we're going to do with our management supervisor teams, we're going to be out there and the units working there. And then we will work on as far as hiring the other open positions that we currently are not filling at this point in time. So yeah, it will be, I would figure probably about a week time to for us to recoup to get into that. And then slowly adjusting. But yeah, we've got a plan in place. We should be able to make it work. And yeah.
Good, thank you. Trustee Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I appreciate too that you explaining that we're subsidizing the meals for everybody too, because I that wasn't clear to me. So I appreciate that. But one of the things I've been hearing is, well, why can't you just continue to feed everybody for free? And so do we have an idea of what that would cost us per month and why that's not feasible?
Okay, so right with the state reimbursements, so we get two reimbursements, federal reimbursements and state reimbursements. Okay, we're just going to talk about state because that's the unknown right now. So it's about $200,000 a month is what it would cost. So we are looking at we in state reimbursements, we at 1.4 million dollars last year. And that's what we would need to be able to come with to to maintain the same level, staffing levels and service levels.
Trustee Strester.
So thank you for doing a really great job explaining and how you came to the decision that you did or and superintendent hood too. So we have the free lunch available until September, but let's say the state comes and provides the funding with the similar like for free meals. Will the families who have paid be refunded? Or will we just move forward?
We will have to move forward at that time. There has to be a for us to qualify for the state funding at the time, we have to go through a certain procedures like we can't have negative account balances. We have to have certain things to qualify. So we'll have to have those things in place to go for that funding, but then that can only happen at the beginning of a month. So if it happens, let's say September 14th, I can't continue to get the reimbursement or put a reimbursement until the beginning of the next month. So we'll have to plan at that point in time. But as far as refunding, that's not on the board at this point in time. Because those meals will already have to be paid for and I can't submit back to get reimbursed for those.
Trustee Doxy.
Yes, thank you for second bite of the apple. Just kind of along trustee Burns' question in terms of the scale up plan that you have in place. Can you remind us, was there a shortage of food service staff the our previous school year?
The past year, not necessarily a shortage. What we did is we ramped up and we opened up more service areas that we hadn't had open, trying to cut down on wait times and offer more sparse variety to what we could at the kids for the kids at the time. So when we set up that staffing model, that is a different staffing model than what I am opening up with now. Mine is reduced based on last year, but no. I think at the point we had a really good staffing model, we were able to cut down wait times, cut down as far as open up venues and proceed with this with those items. So, you know, there wasn't a staffing shortage at that point in time.
Okay, so just.
With staff turnover, I will admit to that, but there was not a staffing shortage.
Okay, and sounds like just being more creative and getting more students served, which you already shared the increase in the applications, which is good and bad, but we we need those because as you mentioned, that helps with other services that can be provided with the district outside of just supporting for feeding them. So thank you.
And that's an excellent point, trustee Doxy. So that those free and reduced applications do feed other grant applications that get the district's money to service students and help meet additional needs outside of nutrition. So having more applications and also is is a good and bad, but overall good financially for the district. So thank you for that point. Trustee Kavanaugh.
Let me just make one more plug that families can write to their legislators and advocate for free meals to get this budget done. You can find your rep and your senator on our website even.
Thank you for that. Trustee when?
Um, just for clarification, I had heard some families that were curious about if you are getting free or reduced lunch, like does everybody know that when you go to get your lunch? Can you please explain that process?
So how that works, each student has what we call a quick ID number. So that number that they use, it starts out in elementary, goes all the way through high school. So that ID number, when they go to the register, they have to put that ID number and identifies them with a picture. And there's no, there's no like years ago, there used to be like a ticket system or you went to a separate line. There is no nothing is denoted that this is not a non-paying student versus a paying student. So except for there's a one digit difference at the end, which only the cashiers and I are privy to as far as how that works. So there's no, I don't want to use stigma regarding free and reduced meals as far as what we're saying and trying to serve to our students. So.
Well, any other questions for Director Kremkow or superintendent regarding meals?
Awesome. Thank you, Director. Appreciate it.
And I knew that was kind of a mini presentation within my report, but that does complete my report for this week. So thank you, trustees. Thank you, Director Kremkow.
Any other questions for superintendent, trustee Burns?
Yes, going back to the fire alarm system at the high school. So it sounds like if the insurance company won't pay, it seems like we might have to go from or pull up from the general fund to cover that. Correct. Because it's related to a repair. Is there any way that we could use sinking funds for that?
It's that I don't sinking funds to pay for fire watch. I don't for for personnel, I don't think are allowed. Yeah. Yep, no personnel allowed.
And that was related to a cause by by a repair. If there's some exception to that.
Don't believe there's an exception for that.
I just had one question. When is the fire alarm expected to be done? So we can be done with fire watch.
I will have to get an update. I don't want to misspeak on that, but I know the plans were being approved. And some of the installation has to occur after hours when our students aren't there. But I'll be happy to get that answer for you and report back.
Could we say months, not years?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions for superintendent hood? Wonderful. We'll move on to board reports and requests. We'll start off with acknowledging board correspondence. Since the last meeting, we had correspondence from Menar Alamaki regarding enrollment. John Billaserta regarding the need needing the board Zoom meeting link. Allison Kuliann regarding concerning school meals. Susan Vela requesting an interview. Allison Cullian regarding concerning school meals, Susan Vela requesting an interview. David Long, Ashley Strong and Chelsea Mahmoud concerning building conditions and Ryan Doyle concerning field conditions. In addition, I will at the end ask if anyone has anything else. We did want to kind of follow up on the board retreat, just so the communities where we did have a board retreat on August first and which was very helpful. Learned a lot, still more work to do. I think the notes here says consensus was it was better than last year, but we can still have room for improvement. Which I think is a great way to describe it. Afterwards, we did send a survey around kind of. You know, asking for kind of feedback, but at this point, you know, was there any other additional reflections anyone had regarding just kind of like how it went? We have some next steps we can talk about here in a second, but just kind of general how it went. Does anyone wants to share? Trustee Doxy.
I think just given their second retreat, that it went well and I just commend our board that we are invested. To continue to grow and learn and make sure we are effectively serving in in our roles. So. I I think it went well. As you mentioned, yes, there's opportunity for growth and that's what we're reflecting on. And that will continue as board members, you know, turn over, but I think we've got some. A good foundation to start with and and moving forward. So thanks.
Anybody else? No, I think I agree. I think it went really well. The one thing that I would say that I put in is I look forward to the next one, kind of having more opportunities to kind of. Get to know each other as board members. You know, we kind of talked a lot of, you know, substance, but just kind of building those personal relationships, I think are important as well. So. I'm gonna look forward to that kind of going forward this year as well. So. One thing that we did want to talk about is as a result of kind of our discussion at the. At the retreat, we kind of have the forming of three ad hoc committees. I believe Rihanna, Tom, actually, or President Buffett through Rihanna kind of sent around if you're interested in serving on those. We had a little bit of response. I didn't know there was three committees. But ad hoc committees, we're going to kind of work through. One was community engagement. One was the board operating procedures and one was superintendent evaluation. Three people kind of responded on the community engagement piece. That was myself, trustee Kavanaugh and trustee or president Buffett. I don't know if anyone else was interested in serving on that. Okay, great. That would be that hot committee. Then we'll work through and kind of work on some opportunities for the board to engage with the community. I'm sure. Knowing trustee Buffett or president Buffett and trustee Kavanaugh, I'm sure we'll have some great ideas for that. Board operating procedures, I volunteered to serve on this. President Buffett did this as well, along with superintendenthood last year. We have room for one more person. If anyone's interested in serving on that ad hoc committee on a board operating procedures. I will know I got some great feedback. Trustee, when thank you. You sent me an email with some ideas, which was wonderful. And I know trustee Buffett and I have kind of been bouncing some ideas back forth on this as well. Anyone else want to serve on that committee? Okay, well, if you if you do, let us know. If you want to further engage, we'll kind of work through that and we'll work with superintendenthood to get some time scheduled to kind of polish those off. And then the last one was superintendent evaluation committee and we have trustee Kavanaugh and president Buffett expressed interest in that. And was there anyone else who? Wanted to be part of that one? Wonderful. Okay, great. That will be that. So we kind of can start working through those. We'll get those committees going and. I will remind the board and the community, the purpose of these ad hoc committees is certainly not to make any decisions. It's just kind of sort through the issue and then kind of bring that to the board for further discussion. So. We look forward to hearing from those committees report out in board reports going forward. So. Does anyone have anything else they would like to discuss for board reports? Okay, great. We will move forward. The next thing on the agenda is a policy committee update. I don't, I will leave it to the policy committee. You have the floor. Please go ahead.
There's not a lot to update today, but we're just working. We've had a meeting since our last board meeting. We have about thirty policies that we're reviewing from. Trune and we have our next policy meeting, September third. Our plan is to finish up those thirty ideally in review and then pull them to the next board meeting for first reading is our hope.
Great. Anything else? Yeah, go ahead. Trustee Burns.
Add is that we decided to, now that we know the sort of pace at which these policies get updated from Trune. This so that we all know it's we don't forget this, but. When we sort of okamize a policy to include like an O at the end of the of it, so that we future committees will realize like why it might differ from the true language.
Those of you that have been on the policy committee are going, great idea.
That is an amazing idea. So yeah, wonderful. Yes, trustee Kavanaugh.
I'd like to think that there won't be as many updates next year. I know we said that this year, but I feel like a lot of the stuff has come from the federal level, having to change things. So hopefully. Let's hope.
Wonderful. I, any questions for the policy committee? Real quick, I just want to say how much I appreciate the work you all are doing. I know how hard it is. I've been there. Again, it's a, it's a slog. So I appreciate everything you're doing for for the board and that work. So thank you. Okay, next we will move on to our action items. We'll start, go ahead with the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
During the transportation contract, right?
Consider agenda.
Oh, sorry. I moved that the board approve items one through three for immediate implementation and appropriate action. Item one, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of July sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Item two, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting of July sixteenth, twenty twenty five. And item three, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August first, twenty twenty five.
Support. By trustee Kavanaugh, seconded by trustee Doxy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Great, seven zero. Motion passes. Next, we have ratification of the transportation contract. Can I have a motion, please?
I motion that the board waive the reading and ratify the contract between the Okamas Board of Education and the Okamas Transportation Association. Effective July first, twenty twenty five through June thirty, twenty twenty six.
Support.
Moved by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee Strester. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We do need to vote. This is requires a roll call vote, trustee Doxy.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh. Andrew Phillips.
Yes.
Lainey Schrecker. Gillian Nguyen.
Yes.
And I am a S.
Great. Passes six to zero with one absent. Next, we have a delegation of authority. Can I have a motion, please? Moved by trustee Kavanaugh, support by trustee Strester. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Great. Motion passes six, zero with one absent. Next, we have the thirty five J grant that we discussed earlier in the meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
I motion that the board award the purchase of classroom books to Barnes and Noble not to exceed ninety two thousand eight hundred and ninety, ninety three cents. And other sources not to exceed twenty four thousand two hundred and forty six and zero cents and to be funded through the thirty five J grant.
Moved by trustee Lynn, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, trustee Doxy.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Andrew Phillips.
Yes.
Lainey Schrecker. Gillian Nguyen.
Yes.
And I am a S.
Wonderful. Motion passes six, zero with one absent. That is all of our action items for today. Coming up, we have a discussion item. On the normal salary increase NSI schedule, we have interim H R Dr. Trezis.
I think the board was presented some of the background on this in November, but just so that you know what this is. The Office of Retirement Services does not consider all payments to employees as compensation for calculation of. Their final average computation for pensions. Mainly affects people in a defined benefit plan, most of them hired before two thousand twelve. So there's a provision of the law that says compensation in excess. Of an amount over the level of compensation reported in the preceding year. Except increases provided by the normal salary schedule for the current job. Classification will not be considered wages for the average weekly or average annual wage. In cases where the current job classification, the reporting unit has less than three members, the normal salary schedule for the most nearly identical job. In the reporting unit or in a similar position. And similar reporting units shall be used. So what this happens or what this does at times is. The ORS will look at the reported salary and audit and decide. Well, you may have gotten paid X number of dollars in the last year or the last five years. We're not going to count your raises for those five years. So your average doesn't go up. It affects your pension for life. And it's somewhat arbitrary, it appears to be. Prior to. Nineteen nine or two thousand nineteen, the ORS established what they call a normal salary schedule. For certain positions such as superintendent, assistant superintendent. And. And administrative assistants, which is an interesting group to include with the superintendent. In two thousand nineteen, a group of retired superintendents sued ORS. Saying they didn't have the power to create a salary schedule. The salary schedule said your raise can't go more than four percent next year or three percent and it vary up and down over the course of time. Which impacted a lot of people that were retiring then. Supreme Court. In twenty twenty one, I believe the. They brought suit or Court of Appeals ruled that the ORS did not have the authority to establish the salary schedule. Supreme Court affirmed, remanded back to this Court of Appeals for some clarification on some issues of. How the law applied, went back up to the Supreme Court. Ultimately. In twenty twenty four. The Supreme Court ruled and said things like. For employees in a job classification of three or more, no salary increases will count toward average final compensation. Unless there is a normal salary schedule. For the the agency or the school. They didn't really reply or give any guidance for positions that had one or two people. They are now saying or implying in their FAQs that if the district creates a normal. Salary schedule for them, they will generally accept it, but they're not guaranteeing they will. So in order to protect our employees. We have to adopt a normal salary schedule for people. We have. A lot of employees that are called select staff. That. Are one off positions, the directors. Are all one offs, the finance director, the assistant superintendent, the superintendent. We don't have and never have had, to my knowledge, a set schedule that looks like you've got steps from year to year. What I prepared. And it's attached to the board. Policies doesn't need to be up here. Was a tentative salary schedule that. Basically froze wages at last year's level. Reason I did that is we don't know what this year's budget really is or what our funding is. The problem with that is. I don't know that that'll suffice for. The ORS. If. We do want to give a raise or adjust because we find what our funding is during the school year. One of the rules from ORS is you can't increase wages for work already performed. So in two weeks I will come back with a salary schedule that might have something like. Three or four years saying. Salaries can increase for these groups or these positions by up to three percent, subject to board approval. And. Will probably not give three percent in many years because our budget is so frail. Thanks to the state. But we have that authority and then we will have to work with that. It's not a guaranteed wage. It's a range that we can use going forward. Have to run a lot of this by our council to make sure. Meets. The terms of the court cases. Unfortunately, we've gotten little or no guidance from M D E. In the last few years. So. Well, M D E does, ORS, yes. Would be. Would be the one that tells us what they think flies. And they haven't yet. So it's up in the air, but wanted to warn the board that it's coming back in another couple of weeks or whenever your next meeting is. And try to answer questions if I can.
Anything you want to add superintendent? I apologize. You were not in the room when we started.
No, that's fine. So this is really. As as Director Trezis said, it's about making sure that the compensation that those one offs get. Can be counted towards pension. When they do decide to retire. So it's something that is required by all districts. And we want to be very careful in terms of how we publish a salary schedule because we know what the budget is. So. As Director Trezis said, we've. Shared with you tonight, ones that are just frozen. So those are the actual salaries that those employees are getting. But we wanted some flexibility. Should there be a settlement? And should there be raises handed out? That there's some flexibility for those one offs to benefit from that and have it count towards their retirement. So. That's the the ask will be for the board at the next meeting to approve those salary schedules, which is. What is, they're telling us is required for them to be for those that compensation to be counted.
Although. Nobody has said, including ORS, that if you don't have it, we won't count your wages. But that gives them a chance and. Former superintendent here ran into a fight with ORS about what would be counted in her wages for the purposes of retirement. So. The threat is real. We want to do whatever we can to protect our employees and their retirement. We're paying. Withholding to the state, we're matching retirement amounts for all those, all of the money we spend to them. I haven't heard anything saying, well, if we don't count that money, we're going to send the money back. So they're getting. They're they're dipping us for. Fifteen percent, twenty percent, twenty five percent of their wages. While we're paying it. But they're not counting the wages when people want to retire. Or they potentially won't. So. We want to do what we can to protect our employees.
Any questions? Trustee Kavanaugh.
And an employee like our superintendent voluntarily. Did a salary freeze for the year. I mean, how does that does that factor in?
It doesn't. Well. The board can change salaries at any time. It's just perspective and it's they've got some guidelines with the state that may may impact what they do or do not accept. But. It may impact him. Well, first of all, he accepts a freeze that is one year salary that doesn't go up. The next year I might have to get, have to look at his contract a little bit more to. To see how that would impact that and possibly discuss that with our attorneys.
Thank you.
Trustee Doxy.
Uh, yes, thank you. So just. Looking across all of the. Staff contracts and salaries, they from twenty four, twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six. They look. Pretty much consistent. With the exception of the food service director and was that.
If if I didn't, it should have been the same.
It is not.
I may have not. The year before he was prorated, he didn't work the full year. So his salary may be up, but I thought I'd corrected that.
We started last year with a different food service director who subsequently resigned. So we picked the highest. Wage that because that individual was, you know, part of the difference. We want to make sure we encompass what that individual was making as well. So it was a different wage because there were different individuals in the position.
So the previous. If I'm understanding what you're saying, the and I'm sorry, may I ask a follow up question?
Of course, thank you.
So the previous director was at a higher rate longevity in the position longer. Is that the, I'm just, okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee dogs for asking, but I will note, we said follow-ups are included in your question. So you are well within, in your rules. Um, any other questions? Great. And my understanding is we'll see this at the next meeting as an action item?
You will. It needs to be formally adopted by the board and, um, uh, Director Trisice will have a resolution for the board prepared.
It's very important to have the rationale in a resolution, um, that we can share with ORS for anybody that's getting into an argument with them. So it, it'll be a little more formal than just a motion and approval. It'll be a motion to approve a resolution. But it has the same effect. It's easier to find.
Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you.
Nothing you're proving yet. Yes. Yes.
Yeah, you'll get an actual schedule with that, um, flexibility. Should the district want to award wage increases, um, up to three percent? Again, we're not saying we are awarding any wage increases, but if we don't capture it on a salary schedule, they will never get it to count. So it's kind of like we're.
We're hedging our bets.
Hedging our bets. Um, so if there is an increase for folks that it can count towards their retirement.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Um, this is, uh, the second opportunity in public comment now on the agenda. Is there any blue cards, trustee Doxy? Um, Mr. Brown, is there, uh, anyone online?
Be online.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there any other matters, uh, that we need to address today? Hearing none, we are adjourned at seven thirty nine P M. Thank you, everyone.